Good evening. My name's Laura Baker. I'm a teacher at La Cumbre Junior High School. I think what I want to just briefly share with you quickly is that the students that are in my class are our lowest Lexile students in 7th grade. And so, these are the kids that came to me. And normally, at the beginning of the school year, I spend quite a bit of time building up their self-esteem and their self-confidence again because they've come to me after years of not being successful. And that's quite a task right there. And the one thing I noticed right away with Read 180 was that the time that it took me to build that self-esteem and that confidence in this class was so much shorter this year than it's ever been before. And I was amazed at how these kids really responded. And it was just a very positive atmosphere in the classroom. There's one student I want to tell you about who came to me. And he's got a 504. He's got some attention difficulties. I did not know that at first. And then I kind of, I looked at him, I thought, hmm, this is interesting. There were some issues that were coming up. And I talked to him personally when we were in our small group time because I had that opportunity and said, "What do you need me to do to help you out here?" You know, "How are we going to keep you focused?" And he goes, "Mrs. Baker, I'm so much more focused than I ever was before. This is really good stuff." And it was really neat to hear him say that. And it was so heartfelt on his part. And I watched this child blossom during the school year. He was my top Lexile gain in the class. 594 Lexile points in one year out of this student. He went home. At the end of the school year, I printed out my Mericor Tutor and I printed out certificates for the students based on their reading counts quizzes. Reading counts is part of that, the program that Kathy was just talking about, the different book titles you heard about. The students read a book, and along with that book, they have a lot of comprehension work, quick writes they have to do, very, very detailed information that kids have to glean and put back and show that they're understanding. They do all of that, and then they get to take a test on the computer to see how they did, see if they understand it. Very high-level questions on these tests, by the way. They're really difficult. And they have three opportunities to take a test. In my classroom, an average of about 20 students for over the school year, I give or take some at different times, 292 tests passed, books read and passed in my classroom alone. 292 books. We papered the walls in my classroom with little bookplates that I made up that the students were able to write their name and their scores and all that on there and put them on the wall. And the last thing I'll tell you, I gave them a certificate at the end of the school year that showed them how many books they'd read and passed, very pretty certificate. And then we had, I had the kids help me take those down from the wall. And they kept saying, "What are you going to do with those?" And I said, "Well, I can give it back to you guys if you want them." And at junior high, most kids, when you give them things at the end of the school year, they usually end up in the recycle, well, hopefully in the recycling bin. In elementary school, I remember you teaching years, I would pack everything up nicely in a nice little folder and give it to them. And they'd all take them home with their parents at the end of the year and want to show their parents what they did. Junior high, they go, "Yeah, whatever." Well, these guys took those and they treated them like they were gold. I had another certificate and all of their little plates that they had, their little bookplates, and they very carefully put them in their binders and put them in there and took them home. That student who made all that growth had 22 books that he had read this year. And I said, "Does that make you feel good?" And he said, "Mrs. Baker, I've never read a whole book before in a school year." And he read 22 books this school year and passed the test on those. So, that's definitely Read 180 success story. So, I want to thank you for making the commitment to allowing us to do these things. I've never seen EL students respond to a program in all the years I've taught as they have to this program. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about taking Read 180 beyond the Read 180 classroom setting. I was, I've been able at Santa Barbara Junior High to use, they're called READ strategies. They are strategies that deal with vocabulary development, collaborative learning, think, write, pair, share, word walls, idea wave, all these strategies that Read 180 teachers are using in their classroom. I've taken them and along with other teachers like Kathy helped me, train our entire staff at Santa Barbara Junior High. And so, these strategies can be taken outside of just the Read 180 setting and impact all students at the school, whatever level they are and wherever they're at in terms of Lexile or readability. The other thing that's interesting is that there's been an amazing collaboration between our Read 180 teacher and our other content area teachers, our science sedai teacher, our math sedai teacher. So, we're seeing these strategies not only impacting students, they're also impacting teachers and how they teach. So, again, thank you for your wisdom in having this program implemented. Thank you.
Good evening. Joanne Caines, Principal of La Cumbre Junior High, a 10. Actually, a 10 all the way across, all subgroups a 10. We have been a huge consumer of Read 180, 170 students. And it's probably no surprise when you looked at those similar school rankings of our elementary schools, most of whom feed to La Cumbre. If I had a magic wand and could have one wish, it would be to have more elementary schools participate in the Read 180 program, not as an option, but as a mandate. You know, I've looked at all of these 7th graders coming in. And you know, when you're behind in reading in junior high, it's a curse. You don't have access to any of the grade level curriculum. Whether it be science or social studies, it is really an issue. And the Read 180 skills, which incorporate a lot of the avid strategies that we're teaching across the board, really translate into the other curricular areas. It also, you know, as we get in this issue of critical reading as a preparation for high school and beyond, Read 180 is nonfiction. It's real life. It's critical reading. And it's all transferable. So, speaking as a 10 school, I'm happy to report that over half of our 7th graders are exiting Read 180 now into 8th grade. And we will have just one Read 180 and one transition, which is part Read 180, part Holt. So, that's really a huge step. Most importantly, having students have access to grade level curriculum with success is what's going to be their predictor for their longevity in high school and opening the doors of higher education. So, 30 years in ELD programs, I've seen it all, as Kathy Dubach said. And we got what we paid for. We spent a lot of money, but amazing program. It's the best that I've seen in three decades. So, to the board and to the district. And, you know, Dr. White's sort of battle scarred. And I just have to say that whatever issues have come up, you know, you email, you text, you call Cynthia, and she jumped right on it. And so, I really, on behalf of principals, teachers, and students, I'd really like to extend a huge thank you to Dr. White, who has followed it all the way through to its success. So, thank you. And it's really been a pleasure.
Thank you very much. To the board, Mrs. Parker?
Well, it's nice getting the thank yous from our teachers and administrators. But the reality is that we adopted this program because our teachers went through what I thought was an absolutely terrific process in terms of selecting what they felt was the appropriate curriculum for us to bring in for these high-need emerging readers. And a number of us sat in on that process towards the end when it became clear that the recommendation was going to be for Read 180, it was heading towards Read 180. And so, I have to say that I was really impressed, and I think my fellow board members were really impressed. And that was what drove our decision. So, thank you because it was your wise counsel that led to this decision. We won't know how it affects our CST scores until August. You know, I absolutely keep in mind that this was a first-year implementation. A number of us spent a lot of time over the past year visiting Read 180 classrooms, particularly in the fall as there were a number of glitches and things weren't quite ready. And I know that we, I think the time that we visited your classroom, Ms. Dubach, your computers were down that day. And so, I actually, I was anticipating an entire year of that level of problems. And so, I was pleased to see that most everything was resolved at the beginning of the implementation and didn't drag out, although I know obviously little glitches happened here and there. So, thank you to Scholastic because I know that when we needed help, you responded. So, thank you. And I'm looking forward to seeing what a second-year implementation looks like if this was year one. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I'd also like to thank you. And it's so great to hear these positive stories. I'm sure you know, as board members, sometimes all the complaints come our way about things that go wrong. And so, it's really important for us to see the big picture and how it's balanced out. I did have a couple of questions, and I don't know Cynthia if you might want to address these. And they're mainly surrounding the technology piece because I know the hardware sometimes failed us and the wiring, and you certainly addressed that here. But is it your expectation that that's significantly improved going into next year?
It's tremendously improved. And we can thank, again, the Facilities Department and the Tech Department. We do have a tech now that is dedicated to all of the categorical programs and anything that's federally funded. So, it supports the Special Education Department. And Ben Graves also supports the Read 180. So, and I think if you spoke with the teachers, they would tell you that Ben, if you call him, he's there and responding immediately. We have new rooms that are being put into place this year because, as has been mentioned, this was a staggered implementation as we could move forward with the technology. So, we're adding a room at Santa Barbara Junior High School this summer. San Marcos High School is adding 75 students to their implementation. And Dos Plavos is also adding to their implementation. They'll be using, we share rooms because it's very expensive. And so, teachers move. So, that's another thing that's been really generous on the part of our teachers is they've, they move from class to class so that we can use the technology for Read 180, for just the Read 180 classrooms.
Great. And the schools that are not implementing it or haven't yet, could you describe the issues surrounding that and the progress towards that?
Yes, we have a couple of schools that haven't implemented yet. One, I can, I can tell you story, each classroom story by story, what's been happening. But for example, at Roosevelt, they didn't have the infrastructure in place. And so, you don't see Roosevelt on this list, but Roosevelt implemented Read 180 without the technology, and the students did beautifully. And so, you don't see it because they didn't take the SRI because they weren't on the computer. But it's Rini Castellanos' room in, at Roosevelt. And I visited her a couple of times, and it was magnificent what was happening with her students. I think you saw that Monroe at the first, that the scores had not gone up very much. And that was because they really didn't get their infrastructure in place right away. At McKinley, they're adding a classroom next year. And so, you'll see three classrooms rather than one. You only saw one this year because they didn't have the infrastructure in place. And again, the, it was done, the Read 180 was implemented in one of the classrooms without the computer rotation. And you hear from the teachers that, you know, one of the rotations is the small group instruction. And so, they did the small group instruction and the large group instruction. And again, they did beautifully with those children. So, I think that next year, it probably, I'm not sure the status of what they're going to do exactly at OAS. They've requested licenses. And so, we have those available and ready for the students. And I believe it's going to be just Harding that won't be implementing. And it's because they have the IB program. Oh, Washington. Yes, of course. Washington is implementing an after-school program. So, they will be doing the end of the school day plus an after-school hour is what their plan is. And they're ready to go. They did not have a trained teacher last year. They lost the person that they had anticipated would be the Read 180 teacher. But yeah, they're ready to go.
Okay. Dr. Noel?
What has been our, what has been the policy about joining in or not joining in?
It's not really a policy. It's more been who's had the infrastructure in place and it was ready to go with a trained teacher. So, it's not been a policy in fact. I don't know. Robin, you may want to speak to that.
I can, yeah, it's not a policy. The expectation is that every school would use Read 180 unless there was a convincing reason not to. And at this point, Harding with their IB program is the only school that has said, you know, "We have all this other stuff going. We can't pile one more thing on top of it." They have a strong RTI program. So, that's really the only school that I know of that hasn't made plans.
Let me just make sure. Roosevelt is in.
Yes.
Technical issues remain.
Yes, correct.
Washington?
In. Next year, they'll start.
But only has an after-school program?
Yeah. Well, basically, that's how they're going to do their implementation. So, they're going to use their categorical monies to extend the students' day by, I guess it's 30 minutes. So, part of their, at the end of their day will be Read 180 plus an extended day.
Is that obligatory for the students?
I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work, but I think that they have bus transportation already arranged for after-school programs. So, that's...
It just seems to me strange that an important mainstream academic program would be after-school. It ought to be in the main, main part of the day.
I believe they're planning to convince the students that they need to be there.
Say that again?
They're planning to convince the students that they need to be there. So, they won't offer it as a simply voluntary program.
Okay. Peabody?
Charter schools have not been included in this.
Charter schools are not included. Okay. So, that goes, there goes Sater Chavez, Peabody, and Santa Barbara Charter. Couple of those might, could use a little help. OAS?
Yes, OAS.
Could use a little help.
Has licenses. So, they, it's just a matter of them getting, they have someone in, signed up for training next week.
Are they enthusiastically embracing this?
The person that's training next week is very enthusiastic. So, I can tell you that. I don't know. I can't, I haven't visited.
How about the principal?
Yes, yes, the principal is absolutely.
That's the person?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I, anything that has this kind of success going for it, I think we should be rather assertive, pushy, and downright authoritarian about it.
Thank you for everyone who participated tonight. We appreciate it very much. Mrs. Guerrero?
So, I do want to echo the thank you. And this is great news. And it's, as was pointed out, it's wonderful to get positive reports about programs that are really working for our students. And as a reading teacher, I love hearing that students are enthusiastic about reading. And hopefully, when they get to my level, they'll, they'll still love it. But I do also want to agree with Dr. Noel that I'm a little concerned about Washington implementing an after-school program for a program like this that is such a, I think, a core part of their learning. And I think, you know, Ms. Caines brought up that if students don't get it in elementary school, if they're behind grade level when they get to junior high or middle school, it really affects them in terms of all of their curriculum, their core classes. And also, just from a, from an affective point of view, I worry that, I really want to make sure that we are not doing anything that would make reading be perceived as a punishment to our students. And doing it after-school and requiring them to stay makes me fear that that would happen.
We can certainly talk about that. I know that one of the challenges was the number of kids and making a classroom during the day. As you know, Washington does very well with their English learners and all students. Of course, that's not all students. That they, they do have students who are below. I believe that they feel that the programs they have in place have been doing a really great job with the students they have, showing this data to them and hearing from other schools and from our discussions as well. Can bring that in. I like your comment about that.
I'm going to cut this off. It's been 42 minutes, and we've got, Mrs. Fisher's been waiting. I think in fairness, we should go on to the next agenda item. I'd love somebody to... Public comment.
Corey Bream. I have so many notes about this. It really warms my heart to hear these stories about kids and teachers that are excited to learn. That's where I want to start. So, thank you. I do feel that you've implemented the program with fidelity and an interest in that that helps and excellent training perhaps, but not enough of that, not enough teachers doing that. So, I'd love to see more. Board, I really have a problem with a few things that were mentioned tonight. One, statistics can say everything, whatever you want. So, 23 schools out of only 13 used it. One-fourth of those schools that used it did not even gain one full year. So, in other words, they fell further behind. Granted, they didn't fully implement it according to the data. But when you sign up for a program that costs the district about $6 million, I think you'd prepare to serve, meaning get the computers ready ahead of time. I don't know, call me crazy. But I think you're supposed to prepare to serve, not go, "Oh, crap, the computers don't hold the program. We just bought for $6 mil," or whatever it cost.
That's a high number.
Okay.
It wasn't. I think it was close to a $1 million.
Oh, that's good to hear because that makes me soften my approach a lot. But I'm still thinking that you should prepare to serve, not kind of try to pick up the pieces after. As a special ed person, I do feel that the ARA funds were taken to supply special ed for four schools. And one of them isn't even using it, Harding. They are not even using the program. It'd be great to see those funds put back in the special ed ARA budget of $14,000 per school that was taken to pay for Read 180 for special ed, and it's not even being used. I'd love to see special ed impact with the situation. So, not just English as a second language, but perhaps those special ed kids, how are they progressing? That's, that's great. And I'd love to see that data presented as well, please. It'd be interesting. This works because they're doing it with fidelity, and they're doing it and following the program. They're not using it in an eclectic manner. And unfortunately, we've seen that happen in other sites. I think sites to implement it really need the training. And I'd like to see more training done since you spent so much money on this. It'd be great, too, if we had that classroom I've mentioned over and over where there's an actual two-way mirror, and you could set up some of these things so other teachers can learn how it's being implemented. So, you could teach more than one teacher at a time. Be really useful. As we prepare to serve, I want to say that my child is at Washington. He's definitely behind. He made a whole progress. 30 seconds. Of 20 words a minute this year, not even nearly catching up. And they wouldn't mean we're proud. I'm not proud. He can spell words at 12th grade level, and he reads at a first-grade level. I'm not proud. It'd be great if it was there. But if you want my kid to stay after school, that's wrong. Washington needs to rethink that. Let me help you. His sister gets out, they play on the playground, he hears the noise, he has to sit in the classroom. Oh, how lovely. It is punishment. And then, when you think that he has two and a half hours to maintain his homework, and he does an hour to two hours of therapy a day to help him, you're looking, he's getting out of school at 4:00, and he's supposed to then do three to four hours of work afterwards, and then somewhere in there exercise because we kind of don't do enough of that in America. Thank you, Ms. Bream. It's not right.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move on. Thank you all again very much. F3, report on the Attendance Support Program.
And Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services, will present this. He has with him Ann Fisher. Ann Fisher is a great teacher and staff member at Santa Barbara High School, and she has helped with this program this year.
Thank you very much. The board requested a summary report on the Attendance Support Program. And the report that we're presenting to you tonight is, contains statistics on truancy.
Excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez. Could we carry the conversation outside, folks? Thank you.
The, the report outlines the fact that at the elementary level, we do not find the principals reporting that truancy is not really an issue. It's being taken care of by letters that they are sending out and phone calls. So, the bulk of this report actually focuses on the secondary schools, on our high schools and junior highs. The first chart that I've, that's posted up here gives you by grade level and by school, the number of unexcused absences, or what the California Education Code calls truencies. And you can see, for example, I'll simply start with La Colina very quickly. You can see at the 7th grade, 867 period truencies were reported this past year. In the 8th grade, it was 1,584 periods. Well, I'm going to skip it and go to the high schools. You will see that the numbers at the high schools are significant. And the report very clearly states that that's where we need to focus our energy, at the high school levels. I want to share with you that a series of discussions took place last year, and the elementary principals took a different tact. They said, "You know what, Michael? We need to start at the elementary district." There is credence for that. However, the statistics very clearly indicate that we need to focus on the high schools. I'm going to continue with the report, and then we'll entertain any questions you might have. I also want to show you a second chart that breaks down attendance by the triggers. As you know, our system requires that three separate letters go out. Before I go into the individual letters, please know that the California Education Code requires that we notify parents when they are truant and when they reach the habitual truant status. We have no choice with that. I also, for, for members of the public, the board already knows that, that there's been a criticism over the year about some kind of prison, the pipeline based on truancy. I want to be very clear that we have not been involved with the district attorney's truancy program for a number of years. All the districts in southern Santa Barbara County have had to find a mechanism to deal with truencies because we no longer have the support of the district attorney's office or the probation department. And I've reported efforts in the past on what we've done to communicate with the district attorney's office about their need to be involved. And their budgets at this time do not permit them to be involved, period. So, every school district in the southern part of Santa Barbara County is doing what we're doing right now. This chart here shows at the high school levels by grade level, the number of students in the first chart who had 18 or more unexcused absences. And I'm just going to very quickly go down to the totals for 18. At grade nine, for all three high schools, 548. Grade 10, 687. Grade 11, 776. Grade 12, 867, which would have generated letter number one. I want to draw your attention down to the bottom chart. This is the number of students with 72 or more excused absence. I want to remind you that this letter requires that the parent and the student meet with a school official and decide, "What are we going to do?" A conference with an administrator, or a, the student being put before the student's success team to figure out what is going on. My point in sharing this with you is that the numbers decreased dramatically. And so, for the bulk of our students, after they receive the first letter where their parents are notified, there's a problem here. The second letter notifies parents that, "We need you to meet with the school official." The third letter says, "You know what? We've already met, and we need to sit down and do some problem solving." My intent in showing you these charts is that there's a dramatic decrease in the number of truencies if the system that sends out all three letters is with fidelity, sent out to the three schools. The part that's missing here that we're not prepared to show you is the value of a student attendance review board, or what we call a SARB, Student Attendance Review Board. We have spent the year organizing, thinking, planning on how we will organize that group next year. And at the appropriate time, we'll call Ann Fisher up here, who's, who can share with you the current thinking and how SARB is going to be established. What essentially, to make a long story short, a SARB is a group of agency folks who... What essentially, to make a long story short, a SARB is a group of agency folks who augment the resources of a school district to figure out, how can we support people who are having a difficult time at schools? I need to share with you that our experience has been that the reasons, there's no one single reason why students do not attend school. It's a combination of things. Some of the students are very challenged with their home situations. Some of them are obviously unattempted to avoid school because of the lack of skills. Very rarely do we meet parents who have made a conscious decision, "I don't want you to go to school." There is a very small, small percentage of that, but it's not significant. The other chart that I'll share with you very quickly has to do with the number of letters that have been sent out. I think it's on the reverse side of this. And it tells you, in a nutshell, how many letters were sent out for each of the high schools, as well as the junior highs. I want to draw your attention to this bottom. Dr. Caprito requested from the district permission to implement his own, Santa Barbara High's own truancy program. And essentially, what the truancy program says is that after four, after five unexcused absences from a particular class, the student can be dropped from the class. Now, the statistics will show that indeed, that's not really occurring. It's a pilot program, but this does show you how many letters, letters number one, two, and three were sent out for the school. There's been no decision at the district level if we will continue with this pilot program over at Santa Barbara High. I want to assure the board that the consequence of dropping a student from a class, though it's listed as a consequence, it was not implemented fully. It's only been a handful of kids who did lose classes. So it's not as harsh as it sounds, and again, we will entertain at the district level before we authorize that this pilot program continue. The last thing I want to share with you are the recommendations that are being made in this report, and there's a number. One of them has to do with, very clearly, we need to focus our attention at the high school level. There are too many students who are choosing not to attend school every day. Another recommendation is that K-12, we need to make sure that there's fidelity to the system that we're currently using about the letters. Not all schools are reporting that they're sending out letters two and three. For a system to work, we've got to have assurance that those letters are being sent out. We also are recommending that the, we, as you know, we, because of funding issues, we chose not to support the officer, the administrator in charge of attendance and safety for the next school year. In order for us to monitor this program very carefully, to make sure that those letters are being sent out, to make sure that a SARB is established as needed, we need someone who's going to focus their energies on that particular aspect. So we are recommending that we continue, the SARB secretary, that's how it was labeled when the board first passed it, that that position continue and be expanded. At the present level, we're going to have a difficult time monitoring the attendance program with staff that's available at the district. I think I'll stop there and invite any questions, and at the appropriate time, bring Ann Fisher up, who actually prepared the report.
Captain Noel?
Could you explain the possible financial implications of these data?
The financial implication is very great, as long as we're a revenue limit district. This is costing us quite an amount of money into the district. As we move into basic aid, it becomes less important, but under a revenue limit system, this is a great loss of revenue to the district.
Ballpark?
I think I would defer to our deputy superintendent.
I can't tell from this what it would be annualized in terms of ADA, but assuming one unit of ADA is about $6,000.
We can compute those figures and provide it to you.
So I can't compute that, because you don't, what they're showing you is truencies, and basically, you'd have to have 180 days, right, to lose one unit of ADA, which translates to 6,000 of base revenue limit.
And the imp-
So, I mean, without a calculator and sitting down, I can't do it.
Shocked. And the impact would be different for basic aid?
Yeah, because you're no longer based on ADA, you're based on property taxes almost exclusively. So, you know, if you're in a declining enrollment pattern, and as long as your property taxes are going up, I mean, I'm oversimplifying this, because they've made basic aid so complicated now.
We have a negative incentive under ADA, then, under basic aid.
It's not that simple right now. It used to be that simple. It's not that simple anymore.
Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, and I look forward to hearing more about the SARB proposal for next year. I guess, I've got a couple of questions. One is, what is the trend? Because we're seeing 0910, but I don't know how this compares to previous years.
Ann?
We have that data, and we'll get it for you, but we have increased the number of truencies incrementally over the last four years. So we're seeing that it's getting worse instead of better.
Okay. And then, I guess my other concern that I would like to hear a lot more about besides the SARB proposal for next year, and maybe I'd like to have that data back up on the screen, and that is what's going on with Santa Barbara High School in particular, and I'd like to learn a lot more about this dropping-
A student after five unexcused period absences, because there's so many implications in terms of, I don't know what that means, I guess, you may be dropped from a class, but then you need to be put into another class. I mean, there's instructional minute issues, there's, I mean, you'd be better, you'd be better off getting, getting an AF, and knowing that you need to move to a continuation high school to get your, to go into credit recovery, rather than just, I guess, I'd need to know a lot more about that, particularly because the numbers at Santa Barbara High are dramatically higher than the numbers of the other two high schools.
I checked this afternoon on the numbers of students who were dropped from a class. There were about 75 students who were placed in study hall rather than a class because of their truencies. Then there were another 50 sent to El Puente, 50 to La Cuesta, and about 75% of those were sent because they had had so many absences from their classes.
So they were essentially going into credit recovery?
Right, right. It takes a lot of time, because each of the students had to receive the letter, they had to meet with me, they had to go to Saturday School, they had to meet with assistant principals, they had to have parents come in. So it was difficult to get a handle on dealing with all of the students that we had who had some truencies. The high school, as you know, is an open campus, too. Lot more temptations there to leave.
How do you send them to El Puente? That's out of the district. I thought they had to be expelled to El Puente, and then given that option.
No, we had a number, especially of students who were so far behind on credits, and there were oftentimes an opening there for special education students that we did not have at La Cuesta. So we would put them, the students placed them there for a short period of time, until they recovered their credits, and then they came back.
Ms. Cudero?
Sorry.
Well, that was going to be one of my questions, too. I thought that it, I did think that it was our policy not, that we don't expel on the basis of truancy, and that our students-
We don't, never seen one.
-don't typically go to El Puente unless they have been expelled.
No, I think that needs clarification, because when you go visit, you'll see a lot of children have requested it, and a lot of it is about truancy.
Well, okay, so if, so the students who are placed there are going by choice?
They're absolutely by choice. The parents have got to agree to it, and they have to see that it's the only way they can get their credits back on track.
Okay. And then, okay, so then I had two other questions. One of them was, I was wondering if there was a way that we could get the Santa Barbara High School data for what their numbers would have looked like in terms of those letters, had they done it by the district, you know, plan?
Yeah, I can do that easily for you. Can I get-
So that we could compare it to the other schools?
Sure.
And then the other question I had, I think is, I actually think is a real simple For San Marcos, are the numbers in the truance, where you've listed the number of truencies they actually have?
Right.
Are those, wait, that's-
Calculated by block.
Yeah, for example, 18 at the other high schools equals 12, is that right, at the, at San Marcos?
Yeah, you know, I-
So, my question was, in this, in the chart that says unexcused absences by school by grade level, the second page, do the ones for San Marcos represent sort of a, an adjusted figure, or are they just the actual number?
I believe that these were adjusted. We made that request, and again, that's something I can double-check for you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Deacon?
This is a really serious issue, so I hesitate to even point this out, but homeschool Santa Barbara has no truencies. Okay, to the serious point, and I'm glad you raised the notion of the open campus at Santa Barbara High, because I don't think anyone can look at these numbers and not notice how much higher their numbers are than the other two high schools. And I know we've talked in the past about trying to slowly close that campus, and so I guess I'd like to know if you think that would make a big difference. I also wonder if there aren't some reporting variances that may drive some of these discrepancies between the schools. I mean, people report things differently and record things differently. Do you think that's happening and contributing to the variation in numbers?
When I visited each of the schools, I found that to be the case with the elementaries, clearly. And there were just issues about how the parents call in, or what their excuses are that they use, or it was not really consistent. The high schools, though, is just, you know, seat time. They're not there.
They're there, they're not there.
And there was no parent clearance, you know, then they were considered truant, so.
Okay. I remember you once said that not having the district attorney involved really hurt, because sometimes parents needed a letter that looked that official in order to get off work, in order to be able to attend parent meetings. I think we've all probably been following the district attorney's race, and there's been some talk among the candidates, at least in the, up to the election, that they might in fact return to providing some assistance, and if in fact, once the election outcome is final, I think we should go back to them and say, you know, let's make good on some of these campaign promises, and see if they really are willing to now get back into the game.
Can you go forward one more page to the, the one, unexcused absence by school grade level, 183672? I'm a little confused. The number of students with 72, that's, if you divide it by six, that's 12 days of unexcused absences?
Right.
You know, it says that letter number three goes after six days. So is the, is the number two letter, number three letter going to the students who have 36-plus unexcused absences?
You know, I looked at that part, and the situation is that the schools were not real consistent at all on what number of truencies would trigger the letters. So in, you'll see the number of letters that went out, and it was kind of like they were going every third week or so, they would send out a slew of letters. So there's not exact correlation between number of truencies and the timing in which the families got the letters?
Because by the time you get to 12, that's theoretically the SARB situation.
Right.
And there's 900 kids there. Did we, we didn't have any SARBs?
No, there was no SARB, and when I went back, the last five years that we had SARB, they were working with about 100 to 110 students a year. So they really would glean out the ones that were the most serious situations, where the schools felt like they needed a lot of other support.
So at the bottom, between the sixth, between six and 12 days, 36 and 72, those 900 kids at the bottom there, I mean, what else could you do to them? Had they all been, did they all meet with the principal? Did they all meet in a group session?
Yes, some of the schools had group meetings, others were just doing one-on-one with the most serious of the issues. I think that not all of these students had multiple contacts.
Okay.
The most important thing that we were trying to be sure is that there was at least the written notification going to each of the homes.
By law, we have to do that.
Right, right. So that part was taken care of, and then each site is handling things a little bit differently. So one recommendation would be that we'd aim for much more consistency in our message to the families next year.
Next year, okay. Any other, that's, Ms. Cudero?
Just very briefly. When we talked about this before, when we were working with the DA, and there were lots of community complaints about that process, one of the things that was often, one of the issues that was often raised is, when students are missing 12 days of school, or even six days of school, what are we doing to address the fact that clearly, school is not compelling to them? How are we addressing that to make, to help them engage in school more, rather than just make it sort of a punitive, "You have to be there, or something bad is going to happen to you"? How are we, what are we doing to help engage them, so that they actually want to be there?
I think that was one of the most challenging parts, is realizing that each one of these students had his or her own reasons for what they were doing. Very few of the students that I saw, for example, had 12 full days. They might have had one class that they cut 30 times, you know? And in talking to them, it was like, once they started not coming to class, then they became so overwhelmed, or they became embarrassed, or they had all these other issues. So those kinds of conversations take time, and it shows the, I think, inadequacy just of a written notification. Somehow, we have to structure in the group meetings in order to start hearing from the families, and we might need to include our counselors more in what's going on, because, you know, I like this shift that the board made, you know, this is attendance support, this isn't punitive, and yet, we have laws to follow, and we have a need, my feeling is, for the safety of these students, we want them where they're supposed to be in the course of the day. So we have to listen carefully to why they're not coming to class.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. You have public comments, two minutes each, please.
Okay. Deborah Pentland, followed by Lourdes Toribe.
I didn't expect to stay this long today, but you're so interesting. You know, on the truancy, I am concerned, because at the elementary level, if you did follow these children, many of the meetings I sit in is, an elementary truancy started to be a problem. And they are correct, it's a multi-problem. But many of the children do get disenfranchised, so I'm really glad you're starting to look at that. What is going to help them? Maybe a group, maybe a pal going to school, but something needs to be done. These numbers also don't reflect the legal truancy. The nurses are constantly being brought in, because mom is giving up, or dad's giving up, and they're calling in every day. Those numbers are huge, and I don't know how we can account for them, but everybody on the ground floor knows that it's happening. So we have some truancy that's unaccounted for. So we have some truancy that's unaccounted for. I'm not sure that our own current policy is being implemented. Cause, um, at some point, we thought it said, um, that the parent has to go to school. And also the bus fare, you know, now that we have kids going from, um, program improvement schools all over town, my health assistant tells me that families have to choose between lunch money and bus fare because they have to take the MTD. So I'm not sure economically, even getting to school... What that is, because I thought we were supposed to provide transportation. So do we get, do we lose money when somebody calls in for, for school? Do we still get ADA money then or is, do we not on those truancies? But not in the elementary, okay. So I, I think it's both. I think their suggestions are excellent and getting the community really involved from the neighborhoods up. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pentland. Lourdes Uribe, followed by Edna Trujillo.
Um, I have, I have three handouts here. And, um, I have an increasing amount of, uh, parents, uh, coming to a support group. And I like to be able to share with them, uh, you know, the information. I know that they don't come here because it's hard, but, um, this information is, uh, gonna be taken to a lot of parents. And, uh, that's one. I'm just gonna use some of the time to, uh, comment on, uh, three of these, uh, three of these handouts. Reading at one eighty, I have here over...
This is not a read one eighty topic.
I'm just gonna say...
No, Ms...
Okay, okay.
You have to address this item, which is about the truancy.
Yes, this item is attendance. Okay, um, I ha, I have problems with the, with the system, with the computers. Uh, sometimes I'm, I'm getting this letter, the first one, uh, luckily. I never get to the second and the third when there's more trouble. But, uh, sometimes parents don't even know that their kids are absent because they're in school and there's problems and, and those, and those kind of things. My feeling over a period of eighteen years, you know, with the reporting is that, um, there's a lot of those numbers whose parents, you know, don't even know, you know? They're, we're all humans, teachers don't report, they don't call or, um, you know, all those kind of things. I think they're serious, so going to, uh, how the program is handled, you know, they, they, we appreciate the call in the evening and all that. But, um, yeah, um, thank you for trying to get our kids to school. You know, I think, you know, going over the things that I share with you will be a good help, you know? Try to, uh, treat them safely. And also again, uh, I don't know if the district has a translator, but, um, if parents were here, you know, if I get them here, they would be able to understand. Until we earn, learn English in one of your classes, Ms. Cordero, you know, parents are gonna learn. I'm probably gonna be in one of your classes, so.
Good, I look forward to it.
For a, for a short period of time, we need assistance. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Uribe. Maybe we can get some of those in Spanish for the parents?
The letters are, are all translated in Spanish, right?
I think she's talking about the, the packet that we had.
Got it.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yeah.
Followed by Lane Wheeler. Is Lane here? Oh, Lane, there you are.
Okay, just a quick comment. Uh, my son graduated from high school this year. Uh, he was at the middle school, Alta Vista. And what, that was one of the reason, because I convinced Jesus to move out from the high school, Santa Barbara High School. Um, it's very loose, the boundaries. And as you see, the nine graders are the higher number comparing to San Marcos. So it's obvious. You can, you have to ask the kids why they don't go to school. Don't, you know, we adults, we have our assumptions. You ask them and they will tell you. There's no boundaries. There's no structure. When my daughter was in ninth grade, I was called by, uh, Dr. White, which was the, um, assistant principal. And I just realized that, uh, she had thirty-four unexcused, uh, absences. And, um, I'm a part, a parent that I'm on top of my kids and I didn't know that. So sometimes we know too late and some parents start even covering their kids because they get in trouble. So there is no, um, there's a lot of things. And what Lourdes said is that, uh, the information that you get sometime is wrong. So there are several issues, but you can ask the kids why they like to go, uh, they don't wanna, you know, be attending to school. And you go to Taco Bell at eleven o'clock or to all those, uh, places around the high school and they are, and they are there. And those, uh, businesses should be calling the school to report them. Because, uh, it's obvious that, you know, no one is doing anything. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Lane Wheeler?
I'll be very brief. Um, Santa Barbara Teachers Association invited both of the district attorney candidates to come and meet with our representative counsel and, uh, field questions about their positions on different matters. The SARB committee was brought up and they both expressed a very positive interest in that. They both expressed a clear understanding that, uh, an early intervention is a very cost-efficient way to deal with this. And they both indicated at our meeting that they would direct whatever limited funds, but whatever funds they could direct to this kind of activity. So I would certainly encourage the district to go back to them. And let's not just let this be a campaign, uh, conversation, but actually a camp, campaign pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Anything further? Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mrs. Fisher and, uh, Mr. Gonzalez. We have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end the meeting at eleven o'clock. So we have eleven minutes. We have consent agenda items, um, with, which obviously are not gonna be given the due diligence they should be given. But let's go through them as quickly as we can. D one with approval of minutes.
This is not time-sensitive. If you could give us the changes, we could bring these back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Uh, D three, Mrs. Deacon?
Quick question. Um, some of the high schools have a lot more people going to the avid summer institutes. How is that determined? Which teachers go and which schools are, how they're represented?
It's all by, uh, who, who wants to go. And some of it is, some schools have gone more in the past and some are just catching up. And others have a stronger avid program going.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and move to approve D three. Second?
Why are they all different dates? Do they have several different sessions?
Yes, there are different ones.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. D four, I'll just move to approve it. My, if I, if I, I think I took that one off. It says no, no cost, but there must be a cost. It'd be nice to know how much this whole program and the Child Development Fund, you know, what do they get?
I have that answer. I asked this morning because I looked at that and went, wait a minute, I know there's, that's not true. Um, that, this is, um, for parents who can pay, they pay a fee for, it's like four hundred and something dollars, I believe, a month. And then on the sliding scale, there are students who don't, or families who don't pay anything. But everyone was paid, was asked to donate twenty-five dollars for the whole summer for the field trips and particularly for the swimming lessons. Some students got scholarships on that. But, um, for these, this particular, the field trip piece, everyone was asked for twenty-five dollars. The other part was just for the whole, the other figure I gave was for the whole, um, experience.
I'll move to approve D four.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You know, D five, I pulled, um, I have a lot of questions on that one. So I'm not sure, um, I, I guess it's time-sensitive, could probably wanna...
We'd like to move forward on finding the right person for this.
On the actual job description, some of my comments are, you know, it says monitor school safety plans. Uh, the previous job was to coordinate school safety plans. I mean, um, that was a big job, getting all those together. Is, is this position still responsible for gathering all the information and doing the template and getting it done? Or is that somebody else's job now?
The school's responsible for the school safety plan. This person would look over the school safety plans, check them for uniformity, check them for adequacy and bring them to the board.
So monitor, coordinate is the same?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez, in the past, did all of the coordination of the lotteries. He was deeply involved in the lotteries at the different schools.
This person would be as well.
I don't see that on here.
It's, um, it, well, I can find it.
There is an inter-district piece here.
Monitors, uh, for the very end, third up, monitors enrollment transfers, inter-district and inter-district school attendance and address verification.
Am I missing that?
It's on the backside of...
Oh, okay.
Right above other related duties.
I move, we approve, uh, D five.
Second?
Can I just ask one quick question? It looks like we're shifting some duties to the TOSA position. We're assuming that that job can already, can absorb these additional duties? Cause it's an existing position, correct?
What, what we're doing is we're restructuring that. Um, Abby Vasquez was in the elementary TOSA. We have other people in the, in the secondary. Uh, Janet Gordon, you saw tonight, was, was one of those people. And so we're looking at that position under Dr. White, taking on the Title III English Learner ELAP, those categorical programs and, and really looking at the English language development program. So focused again, that's how our, our TOSAs began in the elementary was focused just on ELD. They have shifted over the last few years with more curriculum. We wanna go back to that. We need to refocus again on that.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I'm just, uh, because that was part of the description, um, I'm hoping that, because I really feel like we don't spend enough time and money on curriculum and instruction when it is the core, um, job of this district. And so I would like, as that shifting around, to, to, to get a report on how this is going to look, uh, to be sure that we have the supports in place to make sure curriculum instruction, if it's not, um, if this, if this new person is taking on part of the previous...
We can bring you the organizational structure and curriculum instruction and the responsibilities. We'd be happy to do that.
Refresh my mind, in one of the budgetary, uh, areas, we eliminated TOSAs.
Yeah.
So did we bring them back or some of them back?
This one was kept.
We kept some.
This...
We did.
Right.
We kept some?
Yes.
We kept that one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
D ten.
D ten.
Dr. Noel?
Second?
Discussion?
Can I just ask a quick question? It says temp under Sean Carey. Is that, is that like a probationary identification? Or just speak loud. It's an error. Okay, all right.
Yes, that's not temporary at all.
Caught my attention. Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, Dr. Noel abstained. So four, zero, abstain, one abstained. Uh, D twelve, um, I'll move to approve D twelve.
Second?
Under discussion, um, there was, it looked like there was one, um, in item number fourteen in the legal, uh, Nellie Hill. It looked like, uh, we made a mistake there. Is that, no?
No. No, we can, we can explain that.
We, um, in terms of number fourteen in regards to Nellie Hill, uh, one of the things they cornered me on when I was up on the stand was they said, you've overnoticed in science. And it caught me off guard because I was like, why would I have overnoticed? Cause I've gone through this so many times. This doesn't make sense to me. And I, I kinda gave in, which I never should've done. And I should listen to my inner voice more often. But, um, we had overnoticed by one in science so that Nellie Hill, who had been noticed in math, could bump into the science position. So based on the judge's decision, and it, I believe, works out okay when it comes to numbers, we can rescind Nellie Hill's riff.
Okay.
And not go forward with it. And that's what that was in regard to.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, hold on a second. We just need a judgment on whether or not there can be a, a public comment on that.
I, I'm sorry, but she already spoke on this comment, a, a public comment. I, but ma'am, you already spoke on this item. Okay.
I think, um...
Yeah, I, I, I was, I was in this document, I mean, by mistake. But if this is a legal document, that it was recommended by, by the judge. And there are, there are a lot of mistakes, like, my name shouldn't be here.
Yeah, you've already spoken on this issue.
I know, I know. But, but also there are names that are duplicated.
Yeah, it's, it's, you have already spoken on this.
All right, so...
Can you deal with, um, uh, talk to staff personally about your concerns?
Yes, because it's important. Thank you.
We'll be happy to contact her. Um, and board, all of the names were included on this. And you even see people that you've approved for other jobs here on this list.
I'm sorry, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously? Uh, Dr. Noel abstained, okay. D seventeen, um, I had one question on that, uh, probably for Mr., for legal counsel, probably. There's one sentence in the cover memo, in the, under the issue, the very last sentence. It talks about, there may be a possibility that the district will pay from developer fees. Uh, why, can you explain? What, what would hap, have to happen for us to pay for this by developer fees when it's supposed to be coming from foundation fundraising and state match?
Worst-case scenario. The best-case scenario is, is that the contractor submits a guaranteed maximum price that is acceptable and would proceed with the lease, leaseback. If that doesn't happen, then we would go out to bid. If we went out to bid, we would have the option of taking the information that the contractor gave us under this proposal, which I assume is gonna be valuable cause it's gonna point out errors, omissions and contradictions in the plans, which is gonna end up in a lower bid price than there would be also. So I would assume that the foundation would agree and want to include this information in an addenda to the bid documents to ensure fewer change orders and a lower price, which would end up with a, 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 a lower overall cost for the project to them, their budget and, uh, the project. But I can't assume that they're gonna feel that way. And if they don't feel that way and they don't want to include this information and they wanna have extra change orders, I have no way to force that. In that case, I think it's appropriate for the district to pay for that out of developer fees. It's a worst-case scenario that has a minute chance of happening, but it could happen. And I have a duty to point it out to you.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Discussion? All the, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Uh, motion passes four to one with her and voting no. With any others that I missed? Okay, I will adjourn the meeting.
Ms. Mills? Ms. Mills, I have, I have something...